Good evening and welcome to the Town of Auburn Planning Board Meeting of Tuesday, April 9, 2019, now called to order at 7:00 PM. This meeting is being recorded and broadcast live by Local Access Program. Is there anyone here in the audience tonight who's recording the meeting? There being none, please rise and join in salute to the flag.
My pleasure. Allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the Republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
At this time, I'd like to remind the audience, applicants, town administration, and each of the Planning Board members to please refrain from asking questions in regard to all matters discussed this evening without first being granted my consent. The first item on the agenda this evening. Are we still heavy up here? Okay. waiver requests for LLC 347 Rochdale Street, Landscaping Plan 11.2, and Lighting Plan 4.16.
This time, I'll recuse myself as vice chairman and participate from the audience as citizen.
Hi.
Hi. How are you guys?
Good.
Well, Kevin gets set up there. I'll make introductions for the board. It's been a little bit of time since we've last been in here. I'm Paul McLean. I'm Director of Development for ZPT Energy Solutions. I'm here with Barry Sculte, who's Chief Development Officer. Kevin O'Neil is our Project Manager and Design Engineer from Fussin' O'Neil. ZPT is a joint venture between Zero Point Development and Protech Energy Solutions. We're a local Worcester-based solar developer. We've developed over 100 megawatts of solar projects in the state. And I think I explained to you the first time we're here, we also, not only do we develop them, we build the solar arrays and we stay with them for longer maintenance. And some of the arrays we continue to own. This project is located at 347 Rochdale. Did I say that right? It's a vacant hilltop wooded parcel, about 45 acres in size. The numbers have changed somewhat, but approximately the area, acres of disturbance, about 26 of those 46 acres. And the project includes two subsolar arrays, approximately 15 acres in size. Kevin probably has all the right statistics, but he'll correct me when the time comes. It's a 4-megawatt AC project. And this land, the land that's made part of this project will be purchased as part of the development. So just to revisit, I think we were here, maybe we missed our first meeting due to snowfall. I think in January, we got pushed to February. We had that first meeting, and then at the time, we were already working with conservation on planning a sidewalk, those sorts of things. We have application in for site plan approval here. We had application in for special use permit through the ZVA. We were successful in getting that permit accomplished near the end of February. And then we tabled a couple of different times due to weather. And then more recently, as part of the conservation sidewalk, we had a couple of little changes that we had to incorporate into the plan, and that's the reason why we continued to tonight. So I'm glad to say that at this time, we've got through those changes. The whole project's been under Burton's review, so we've had three or four exchanges with them, the most recent of which we got the letter, I think, yesterday or this morning, basically satisfying all comments. And so, you know, another thing probably I should mention is we have our own community outreach, so we send letters out to all the abutters.
Can I just ask a question? When you say all the abutters, did you include the people that are going to be looking at this solar array from Bryn Mawr Ave?
We would just send to the people that surround the parcel by contiguous property line.
Yeah.
And of those, you know, I had all the property addresses at 345 Crowell Hill Road. Contact me. I've worked with Ron, Mr. Brooks, on his view corridor. And early on, that's what resulted in, you know, some changes at the south end of the project. We took, we removed a portion of the array at the south end. I'll let Kevin kind of go over those changes with you. But essentially, anything that was rolling down the south side of the hill facing those abutters, we took out. So now the array is completely aligned with the high point on the ridge and folding over the backside of the ridge.
Which, that's my concern, because the backside of that is the pond. And the abutters, the people that own property on the water, are now going to be looking at a solar array from across the water. And I'm not sure that they're aware of what's the changes that are to come. And it is going to visually impact that area as well. It's not just the people that are living, you know, like you say, to the left and the right, and on that side. So that's why I asked. All right.
So with that, I'll maybe just, we could do whatever the board would like.
Do we want to do the waiver request first for the?
Yeah.
So we have a waiver request for the landscaping plan 11.2 and lighting plan 4.16. Did you want to do anything?
No, it was requested, I think, in the second, first review, it was requested that you have this waiver. And we haven't had a agreement to vote on it yet, so now they're asking to waive those two requirements that were normally part of a site plan.
Well, again, I'm going to bring up the fact that if there's not going to be any kind of a landscaping plan, you are going to negatively impact visually all of those neighbors on the other side of that pond, and ask you to consider, you know, doing something to mitigate that with a landscaping plan.
So can I jump in?
Sure.
So we're requesting a waiver from the landscaping plan, because really, the project will be screened using the existing vegetation that's out there. Sort of the analogy that we've sort of used in the past is that if you imagine the height of the trees as like an in-ground swimming pool, and the panels themselves are like toys sitting on the bottom of the swimming pool, like you can't see into your neighbor's, right, swimming pool. So, you know, the trees in this area are very mature, 50, 60, 70, 80 feet tall. The panels themselves, I believe, are all under eight, typically eight feet.
So you're telling me that the trees that are there now are going to block the solar array from the other side on the pond, the pond side? You're not going to be able to see them because of the trees?
I'm not guaranteeing that you won't be able to see it. I'm just saying the existing trees that are out there, that are 60 feet tall, are what's going to really provide the screening. We're asking for a waiver from the planting, because if we were to go out and plant trees, they would be six, eight feet tall. So the existing vegetation is what provides that screening. And typically, if we have a close abutment, we will supplement with additional screenings. It just didn't, wasn't warranted on this particular project. So we don't have a quote, like a planting plan, if you will. We did propose in the last revision, a couple plantings for the wetland restoration, and that's currently all that's in the project.
What's the distance, Kevin, between the, how, what's the distance of the vegetation that's going to remain?
There's hundreds of feet. I'd have to scale them off, but it's hundreds of feet of existing vegetation to the closeness of water.
But you are at the highest point in the town, and, you know, you're clearcutting 26 of 46 acres. And I'm not sure that, you know, although, you know, I agree that there are mature trees 60, 70 feet high, that you're not going to see it.
I can see it anywhere.
One of the, you know, our solar bylaw is about visual impacts, and I'm concerned that this is going to really negatively affect the backside of that, and across the pond.
Well, like Kevin was alluding to, I'm not sure there's anything you can do from a landscape perspective to overshadow 60-foot trees that are falling down that whole ridge all the way for, I would challenge you that there's 500 to 1,000 feet.
Oh, yeah.
And then you're talking across the pond to the east as well, there's, you know, I don't think there's anything you can do about that.
The top of the existing trees, that high elevation, the solar. Have you guys had any thoughts on that? I mean, have you, have you had opportunity to take a look from the other, from the other side?
Yeah.
And look across the water, and that whole hill is going to be, our bylaws says.
Can you pull up on Google Earth how far we're talking about?
That whether, you know, screen abutting residential properties, whether developed or not, sightings shall be such that the view of the solar energy system from other areas of town shall be as minimal as possible. You got a house on the water, and now you're looking at a solar array.
As possible.
As possible. Right. That's what I'm saying. Is there any way they can mitigate?
Minimum.
Yes. Any way to mitigate the, you know, the effect on the other side?
We have, yeah, I mean, all around, we have our own buffer that's in place with the vegetation that's undisturbed. And those are mature trees.
So you're going to?
Go ahead.
No, go ahead.
Just taking the two arrays at their, you know, the northern and south. The lowest elevation down here is elevation 730, and the elevation up here at the top is 796. So that would be a 66-foot difference. On the southern array, southern array.
So on the, can you show us there on the picture, on the, on Google Earth, where we're going to see that?
Where, where this is?
Yes. Where it will be located.
Can you include the map version of this for one second, so I can? Ah, the promenades aren't there. Could we do it on Oliver, so we can look at it with a property line? Would that be okay? That would just help me orientate.
Yeah, that would be fine.
And while he's doing that, on the southern array, let's say it's 800 at the lowest. And then the highest elevation where's the panel is 875, so it's a 75-foot difference.
So would that, that would mean that the existing mature trees are going to screen the majority of their?
The highest point of the trees on the, on the eastbound side are as tall as?
Going to screen it?
Yeah.
If you go to the base map here, you can go to this.
I mean, that's actually the best screening available.
Well, yeah, of course.
You know, and the fact that we're keeping several hundred to 1,000 feet.
There it is, right there.
So this is the property?
Yep.
This is kind of like the northern array?
Mm-hmm.
And this is the southern?
The southern array.
Down, down here. That ridge line is, oh, yeah, that's a good thing.
Will it be a thing side by side here?
Yep.
Can you click where you're?
This pinch point here, is this pinch point? This is that there. Yeah.
Right. You need to cheat us?
You say that they're going to screen. I'm just curious. I hadn't thought of this, but you say it's going to screen, but the slope is going down always. So the trees may be 70 feet high, but they're going down.
Down.
So the top of that tree is not going to be up where, you know, from Bryn Mawr Ave, you'll see.
What Kevin was indicating is on the southern part of where our, or the eastern part of where our array sits, to the high point of where the array sits, is 50 or 60-foot elevation change. But at that cell point, there's a 60-foot tree at the east edge. So these, the trees along this edge are, you know, are all mature. They do decline, you know, that is a slope that goes down here, but the highest point trees are still, you know, shielding 60 feet, you know, above that, that high point.
You're also typically usually looking up at the top of the tree and then looking past.
Have you sat across the pond and taken a look at the ridge?
I have not. I'm speaking, just like I said, in general. You scroll out on the water a little bit. See what we're talking about here. What is that, Wallace?
Now, you're sitting on Bryn Mawr Ave.
On Bryn Mawr Ave, that's the closest.
Yep. You're looking right up in that ridge here, and they're going to clearcut that whole ridge.
You can down approach the street, you know, Bryn Mawr Ave, it's actually, take 10 to 12. You're a little right instead of going out always.
Yeah, the, these people here.
Yeah, all on the water there.
Gotcha.
I know exactly where you're saying.
How far away are they?
Yeah.
A mile away? Is that what the bylaw intended?
If you, you can.
I don't, I don't, I don't think, you know, it doesn't say mile or less, or I'm saying, when you sit, that ridge is right there.
All the way to the left.
You can see it. It's the highest point in town. It's beautiful right now. It's all trees, and it's going to be clear cut, and then there's going to be solar panels all over the top of the ridge. So it's just these.
1,400 meters. That's 1,400 meters.
That's about.
Three miles? It's not three miles.
No, it's about a mile. It's about, it's about eight, nine tenths of a mile.
Yep. And that's not even the, you know, that's missing the point. Anyway.
No, I'm stuck on, right now, where you have a 60-foot difference in elevation. It's 60 feet higher here than it is here toward the house. You have a 60-foot tree here, and you've got panels here. You're sitting over the tree, you're seeing the panel on top of it.
Right. That's right.
Not if, not if there's a tree that's along that southern edge that rises up higher than the 15-foot-high panel. The panels are only 10 feet high, right? And the tree right beside it is 60.
You don't have any markers to do it on the board. You're going to see the panels.
Yeah, of course you are.
Especially in the winter.
Any thoughts, Nick?
Yeah, I guess we need to think about it, but it, there's already a 40, an open space project that was turned down here, with wells that were going to be put on a landfill or by the old dump.
Well, it's a subdivision.
Yep.
Yeah. Right, with an open space component. Yep.
We're going to ask ourselves what usage.
And that was a, that was a water issue.
Yeah, there was a lot of issues.
Yeah, this is an aesthetic.
But as to what usage are we going to allow here?
Yeah.
You know, but it's undeniable.
Is there a way that we can mitigate it? Is there some way that you can mitigate?
I defer to the applicant.
Is there any way to bring that back and over, or?
It's, I think the way to mitigate it is by leaving hundreds of feet of existing mature trees. It's not like we can put a berm and plant other trees. It's not going to, unless it's taller than the existing trees. It's really not going to do anything.
That whole area has just been inundated with these, you know, with these projects, and, you know, it's just, like I said, I sat there and looked at it and said, this is.
Now those trees are going to continue to grow?
Yeah. That's, you're still going to see those. Yeah, it drops down. You're still going to see it.
The 60-foot difference, or what span is that? High point to low point, you're saying?
I don't know what scale this is. Can I borrow somebody's little set?
Here, I'll set here.
Oh, you? I think it's 100.
What's the scale on the plans you just looked at?
These?
Yeah.
That's half-scale. They're not quite half-scale, because they're 11-by-17s, so they're not quite half-scales. From the limited clearing over here to the other side is 500 feet. And then this biggest distance here to where a panel is, is 600 feet, so 500, 600 feet.
Is there any, anybody in the audience want to, any public comment?
It's 11 percent.
Mr. Brooks?
Yeah, it's like 10, 11 percent.
Which is?
Mr. Brooks?
Yeah, Paul came up, and we looked at it, and he resented me some stuff that took some panels off the end and eliminated some that were facing sloped right at the end. But my question was still, and when we went up in the back of the house to the next level on my property, was that if I didn't have my trees there and I cut them, there's still, I still have that concern. I can't tell by what you did that I won't see them. If you take where, is it Kevin? Where you got your ruler?
Yep, right here.
You go from that to the, right down the ridge line, like, that I won't, if I was clearcutting, I won't be able to see those on the top. Some of them, that's, that's what I have, that's my other concern.
Our eliminated.
You eliminated the other ones, that was.
Yeah, so we're on the whole downslope in behind there, so.
No, I mean, from some of my land at the back, I've got like 60 acres all around there. And some of it from the back of the house, you, if the trees were cut, you would see any of that that's flat or sloping towards the west. You wouldn't see it.
So a couple things. So the closest we are is like, is right here to a property line, and our limited clearing is 130 feet from the property line right there, and that's only, the only spot where it's closest. It obviously peels up away from that point. It's up at the top of that ridge, so again, you have those tall 60-foot trees, and then right behind it, an 8-foot, 9, 10.
Well, even where you eliminated those on the south bank, that were facing west, southwest, but the bank is sloping down, so.
There isn't anything on the downslope.
I know you don't have it there, but I'm talking about where I just saw, you drew that central line from the corner up to the middle of that thing, where your ridge line is going to go to a little bit to the west, that if I cut my own trees, okay, which you kind of utilize it as a screen to me, then I, that would be visible. That would, a lot of that would be visible. I mean, I can't, I don't know how to see without cutting all the trees, but I can see through them, that I can envision that, what it would look like, and there's no way that I'm not going to see them.
You'll still have a couple, like I said, at the shortest, 130 and more, you know, other areas, typically.
Yeah, but those trees at that southernmost end aren't going to, from when I'm way back here, up on top, you know.
Well, we're not, we're not using any of your property for the buffer. That's why I met you. I heard what you said, and we eliminated several rolls of panels that continue down here.
Right.
And those, they roll in the, in the south direction, okay? So those were eliminated. Then we had another array that sat here that rolled down in the easterly direction, and I agree 100 percent, because we drove along this south, you would definitely have been able to see them. So we, now the array, the road travels the high point, and the ray falls on a gently sloping back, you know, back. So there's, I have 130 feet at the shortest distance of buffer to Mr. Brooks' property. And he has, and then he has, yes, he can go clearcut 60 acres of his own trees if that's what he chooses to do, and then he can look at 130 feet of buffer at the narrowest point. 300 feet is probably the longest point.
Just a minute, Rodney. Did you have something you'd like to say?
Oh, I was just wondering.
Could you please tell us your name?
Yes. My name's Joanna Landerville. I'm a town resident for the past five years. I'm just curious, it's more of a question, is, how many other existing projects are there that, is it, sorry, is that part of the reason for the pushback on this project?
No. No. There's a lot of these projects coming in, but that's not the reason. The reason is the visual impact for the town. It's the highest point in the town.
I have a stupid question. Have the residents on Bryn Mawr Ave and, say, Lester Street been asked about their position?
No, and that's one of the things I ask, and I think that, that's something that.
They wouldn't be required to.
Wouldn't be required to.
Because they're not, they're farther out than 100 yards.
Although they will be adversely impacted.
Did they receive notice of this meeting?
I don't believe they have, and that's, that was one of my concerns.
It would have been in the paper. It just wouldn't have gotten a notification, because they're not in the 300 feet.
Mr. Brooks?
If, I think, Paul, when we looked, you were down in this area where, or down in here, where you eliminated.
So, Mr. Brooks, the array just is right in this property right here, so that's where we're talking.
It's this here?
Correct.
Okay. All right, yeah, here's the point. I get it. Okay, so you eliminated those that faced south and stuff, and then took some off the tip. But when we were, here's where some of my clearing is, I think, when we were right up in here, right up there, and I said, if I looked, the concern I had was, if I looked at this ridge line, you're going to have, you're going to have them going here, a whole bunch of them in here, and that I would, if I was, because that height is almost level with, even with some of the heights up there, that I would see that, like, top of them and maybe a little towards the west. You said they were going to be cocked a little southerly and.
East.
South and southeast, so you might not have that same tilt. And this piece here, this is not yours.
No.
Okay, this one here. So you're just right there, and then there's the, so that was my concern, is that from there, if I, I might see a bunch of it here. And without cutting them, I can't tell, but you can envision looking through the trees that you can see some of that slope.
Right.
And you did correct, just like you said, those, that other area that was, I mean, was right in face, you couldn't have seen it.
And we removed those.
John, did you have anything you wanted to add?
Not really. I'm concerned, this concern you have, that you're going to see it, and that, you know, may not mean anything to the developer, but it means something to the property value to the people that can see it. So if they want to sell their house, if somebody looks across the street, midwinter, and sees all the solar panels, it's going to be like, I don't want to be looking at that. I'm wondering if it'll.
Right now, you're looking at a beautiful.
I'd have to, we'd have to ask the town assessor who would affect the property value. I don't know. I'm not a realtor.
What do you suggest, Alan?
Is that, is that a specific requirement in the bylaw? First of all, I don't, I think it'd be very difficult for a town assessor to come to that conclusion. I mean, that's.
Well, I won't, nor will I ask them, and neither do you.
Pardon me?
I don't know till I ask them, and neither do you.
No, but we've, I mean, I've done in other little towns. I've spoken to town assessors, and it's almost, it's an impossible question to answer.
The bylaw does have a paragraph on visual impacts. It's, in my opinion, not entirely specific. It's, to me, you know, it's.
The judge of the planning board.
The solar, solar system from other areas of town shall be as minimal as possible. The judgment of the planning.
As minimal as possible on the highest point in the town, backside. Mr. Brooks?
Is it possible to ask the applicant, maybe notify whoever those people would be?
I was just going to say, maybe, maybe we give it a little time and notify people on Bryn Mawr, across the pond.
And Lester.
And, yeah, and Lester Street.
We should identify which properties we want the applicant to. If you can provide a.
Absolutely. Yeah. And let's just make sure that, you know, everybody has their say, because that's really what, that's what we're here for, is.
And we are too.
We want to try to keep, you know, we're not going to make everybody happy. We want to try and, you know.
I think the area would be from Waterman Road all the way to Lester Street. And Lester Street, from Lester Street all the way to at least the Crowell Hill.
Adam, can you put together the list of additional? And we'll send, we can send letters out, and, you know, we'll have our phone number on there, just like the other letters.
Yeah. Yeah, I think it's important.
Well, we agree.
This is a, yeah. And it's a long-term thing, too.
It's a long-term thing. We're going to be here for the long term. You know, we're doing another project in town.
Yes.
So we're not. So, we're not, you know, the reason why we've been successful and the reason why we've been doing this for such a long time, is because we, we do our best to work with everyone.
Terrific. Good to hear.
Guys, as the, I think I know the answer already, but I'll defer to you guys, that as possible, if there's any other means to, I don't get it...
There really isn't, I mean, it's, um...
Could it be reduced in size, or...
No, we've already, I mean, quite frankly, we've done that already.
And, you know...
We already committed to the power company.
Yeah, I mean, we, we've, I mean, I thought we had very productive discussions with Mr. Brooks, and we, we agreed with him that those other panels be removed, we did that.
And I thought that, you know, I read the bylaw, obviously we came in under the other project under the old bylaw, this bylaw we're aware of even while we were seeking approvals for the first project. And so, we purposely, you know, stayed away from all this side, and we, we didn't know how we could tackle people a mile away, that's, we didn't think the bylaw was intended to...
It's a difficult parcel, it, you know, it is, but, like I say, let's reach out to the other people and, um, continue the hearing.
Okay.
Okay. Yes?
Richard Rand, 61 walls out, just a thought, could coniferous trees be planted as a barrier? Because in the winter, they don't lose their leaves, and it still creates a barrier, it's just a thought, they can grow pretty tall.
The only evergreen that's gonna grow that fast would be an amber lady.
Right, and then the deer, they're gonna destroy them.
And there's actually a mixture of vegetation up on the hill, I was surprised, you know, how much...
You can see, because this is in this area, there's some coniferous.
Yeah, so there's, there's a mixture of hardwoods and, and, uh, coniferous trees out there already, so I'm not, you know, I'm not sure, you know, we're open to suggestions, but let's, let's get the message out to the other people and...
Absolutely. Do you have something else, Mr. Rand?
Just one other question, you guys said you've been doing this a while, do you have any other projects that are similar up on a hill where we can go and view from these distances and see the impact? That's it.
It's a good question. Um, we'll take a look at that.
Great, if you could bring that back.
Yeah, and we have some photos, um, we'll take a look at that.
Okay, okay. Mr. Brooks?
Yeah, I would just suggest that, Adam, on Leicester Street, if you're coming down Bryn Mawr, you know, or down Warren, wherever John said, and go to Leicester, that you would drive it, Adam, because I don't, I don't think it will affect all the people on Leicester Street, as, I'm just looking at it now, there'll only be certain people that would have, that it would even have an effect, they'll be looking from the backside at it, kind of.
Yeah.
But you can go look yourself, but...
I'll take a look.
Warren Ave may be better, as the furthest one.
Yeah, Warren, right, yeah.
Warren until Leicester, Leicester go top of the hill, just so everybody's covered.
Okay, any other comments, guys?
Were there any other, aside from this, like, particular issue, or were there any other issues that the board had concerns with, or...
That was really my, my biggest one.
Any concern, we'd like to hear what the, the people that'll be affected have to say.
Oh, understood, I just want, is there any drainage concern, I mean, drainage is my thing. But if there are any, just if there are any other concerns that we could, so if we come back and...
Peer review, you may have all the requirements.
Okay, great.
Was there a test pit?
Yes.
And that'll just be done on...
Yeah, so...
But it says the relocation shifted to a location that did not have test pit information.
Yeah, one, one basin.
Correct, so this basin shifted from, from here to here, so, um, Burton just recommended that we perform a test pit during construction to confirm that, so I think if that, obviously if that were a condition, I would...
We'll put that as a condition.
Yeah.
How far are you moving, how many...
50 maybe? 50. Soil conditions should be generally consistent.
Should be, but...
Yeah, and like you said...
I should take an hour and a half to get somewhere.
So, do you anticipate doing that before the next meeting, or...
That would be part of the construction.
Yeah, we'll do that during construction.
All right, okay.
So, if that's part of construction, say you don't need soil requirement for a said basin, then what do you do?
We come back to you?
Yeah.
It's our risk.
Okay.
And Burton would be on site for that.
Oh, yeah, absolutely.
Yep.
Anyone have anything else?
Just as possible standard, for me, not speaking for anyone else on the board, would be to mitigate as best you can, I think if there's a resident that sees a solar panel, I don't think the intention bylaws to be that stringent.
Understood. Well, we appreciate that, and we will, you know, we'll reach out to the residents and...
That'd be great.
If we feedback.
Okay, so if we have a motion to continue to, what was it, April 23rd?
Link a motion to continue to April 23rd?
Second.
Any further discussion? All those in favor?
Aye.
We'll see you on the 23rd.
Thank you, thank you very much.
Thanks.
7:10 creation of a new section 12 of the urban zoning bylaws establishing and governing the Drury Square Village District. Amending section 2.1, adding Drury Square Village District to the classification of districts.
Yep.
Amend section 3.1, adding Drury Square Village District to the table of uses. Amend section 9.6.1, adding the planning board as a Drury Square Village District special permit granting authority. Amend section 5.4, adding Drury Square Village District to the dimensional table. Amend the urban zoning map defining the boundaries of the Drury Square Village District. Do you introduce yourself, please?
Yes, hi, my name's Heidi Murphy, I'm a municipal planner at Central Mass.
Just be with us one minute, any, no, motion open?
Make a motion to open the public hearing?
Second.
All those in favor?
Aye.
Okay. Welcome, Heidi, to your Central Mass regional planning?
Yes, I am.
Okay.
Um, so, as you're aware, the town has held informational meetings and events on this from 2018 to 2019. Um, tonight is the public hearing. Over the last year and a half, it seems like, um, any comments that have been brought up on the proposed bylaw have been addressed. So, having said that, if you want to give a quicker overview, I'll defer to the chair on how to handle it.
Yeah, that'd be great.
Um, okay, so, basically, what the bylaw does is it has, um, the area that's currently its own local business will be rezoned to the Drury Square Village District. Um, I brought paper copies of that up, but I think Adam also has the zoning map as well.
Do you wanna get your bearings? The mall is here, since the high school and fields, the office office is over here, the Verizon is right here.
All right.
Okay, so, um, and essentially, the bylaw is separated out, there are by right uses, there are uses permitted by special permit, and there are also prohibited uses. Um, essentially, it creates a mixed-use walkable zoning district, it's going to tie into several long-range plans that the town has in place for Drury Square, you've had plans done by a consultant, and, um, you've also had like an economic development strategy looked at and et cetera as well. So, um, it will reduce the dimensional requirements, and it essentially promotes pedestrian-friendly walkability in the long term.
That's very good.
That's like a three-second summary, it looks like you have a really busy agenda tonight, um, it seemed like maybe it might be easier to...
Nick, have any thoughts?
No, I'm fairly familiar with this. No questions?
No questions, the only question I've always, it'll take a while for all those that exist to ever wanna convert or look for some kind of a permit that might have us be able to ask them to do whatever they need to do to conform.
That is correct.
Some major, something they were looking for or something, because it's, you know, it's great, and it would be beautiful to have it, and, uh, but it would, it's, it'll take a while for, a long time for, for everyone to be able, wanna do that to their business.
Yes.
So, we have to start somewhere, and I think this is a good first step?
Yep.
To create that district? Absolutely.
Yeah, I think it's a great idea.
And it extends all the way up to the on-ramp, to 290 on the right.
Yes. Yes.
Right, it goes beyond Walsh Ave.
Yep, goes up to Young.
And then it's right up to Young Shing and that sector there.
Yes.
Yep.
And the town has, like, invited all the property owners and all the business owners into this, as well, it's not somewhere...
Also invites, also invites all the property owners as well as the town meeting members, so they're all aware of, this is coming next month. Um, the board of selectmen voted last night to recommend approval of this.
That was not really a downside.
No, no.
No, not at all. They say we could've started somewhere, and this is a good first step.
Do we look to recommend it, or...
Um, I don't know, is anybody in the pub, in the audience?
Is there any public comment?
So, we'll, we'll need a motion to either recommend approval or not recommend approval.
Make a motion.
Go ahead.
Make a motion to recommend approval of the new section 12 of the urban zoning bylaws.
Any second?
I'll second it.
Any further discussion? All those in favor?
Aye.
We should close the hearing. First, can I have a motion?
I make that motion.
Second?
Second.
All those in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Motion to approve?
I'll make a motion to approve section, uh, the creation of a new section 12 of the urban zoning bylaws.
I'll second.
Any further discussion? All those in favor?
Aye.
Thank you.
Heidi, thank you very much.
Have a good evening.
You too. Okay, 7:20, citizens petition to allow tiny homes amending urban zoning bylaws, section 3.2... Oh, I'm sorry.
That one.
7:15, creation, I checked it off, see, I shouldn't have done that. Creation of a new section 13 urban zoning bylaws to define and govern tiny homes, is that the right one?
Yes.
An amendment to table of uses 3.1 and 3.2 to add a new section 3.2, 2.11 for tiny homes. An amendment to section 3.7, amending 3.7.4 to allow tiny homes. So... Same with Adam?
Um, we have not heard back yet from town council on this, so there may be some more minor changes to the proposed amendment that was in the package from the other day.
Yep.
Expecting to hear back, um, anytime now. The board of selectmen did vote to recommend approval of proposed bylaw last night. So, as it stands, this is gonna be a little, I don't expect any...
Minor changes, just some minor changes.
Major changes, minor, I'll edit, edits. Um, I know I'll need to renumber the bylaw to conform to that I'm numbering system for the zoning bylaws, but that's just numbering. I don't expect any major changes from town council.
Okay, so, direct from this?
I'll need to open the public hearing.
Okay. Need a motion to open the public hearing?
Make a motion to open the public hearing. Second it.
All those in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Okay, so, the board of selectmen have...
They've voted to recommend it.
Voted to recommend it. Okay, did you have anything additional, just that there will be some minor, lightly some minor changes?
Minor changes, um, I hope that, I hope I hear back this week, the fall is supposed to go up, the winters next week. It's up to you if you want to vote to recommend, amend it as is, or, you know...
With minor changes.
With minor changes as needed, by, recommended by town council. And maybe people in the public that are, questions, comments?
Okay.
Can we recommend changes in this meeting?
Yeah.
Like you can't be putting a driveway like they said in the paper on Saturday.
Yeah.
They wanna put it in the driveway.
They wanna put the tiny home in the driveway?
To the paper. That wasn't part of the...
No, it wasn't.
I feel misled.
I will say, I don't think a driveway will conform to the requirement of being on a foundation built by building code, per building code, that probably won't fly.
Nick? Anything to add? Scott? John? Mr. Brooks? Any public com...
I was just gonna see if the applicant has anything to say.
Any public comment?
Yeah, so, just to speak, my name's Bill Karenz at 25 Wellman. To speak to the location, the driveway is a reference point to show how wide and how far the, the structure would extend. The location that we would like to put it is on the side of the garage that runs parallel to the driveway that does, that does not extend any further than the front of the house. It wasn't putting in the driveway.
Right, I feel misled, because you came in here, you and your wife, to build a tiny home for your grandmother, elderly portion of your family, but I didn't know it was in Lucie, you could start a business out of it.
We have a business already.
It's, that business already existed, and it was...
That's not what you conveyed, what you conveyed was that you had to build it to do it. You didn't say you were gonna do it yourself.
You said we would hire subcontractors.
So, if you're in the construction business, to add one room on a house and a bathroom cannot cost you $160,000 unless you're building a Taj Mahal. It's not possible. If you're in the construction business, there's no way it's gonna cost you $160,000.
We, it would, because I, I do concrete construction, so the framing, the electrical, the plumbing, that's nothing that I do. So, I would have to hire every contractor.
No, I understand it, but I know it can be built for less than $160,000.
But it's not gonna be built for the cost of a tiny house?
No, I'm not, I'm not arguing that point.
Okay.
I just felt that we were misled a little bit.
Well, it wasn't my intention to mislead, and I'm still not following the...
Well, if you brought it up in the meeting that, you know, you did have your own business, your intent was for your grandmother, and that you do have a business and you'd like to, you know, be able to expand on that if it gets approved, great. When I get it slapped in the face in the paper on a Saturday morning, it's like, wait a minute here. No, no one ever mentioned the fact that you were gonna build a tiny homes, or subcontract it out to your subcontractors, that you were gonna be the main, the main company.
Building it on a property.
You advertised to build tiny homes in the paper, in your article.
I did not.
You said, you just, you just read it.
If you can find a passage...
I don't have it in front of me.
Okay, but if you could please reference that passage, that's not in favor. That's not in favor. We did not advertise that we're really tiny home builders, by any means.
Stop it right there. So, this complies with everything you put before us?
Correct.
This is for an elderly parent?
Yes, correct, my grandmother, yes. I would, so I, this, this piece, this...
Well, it's gotta be 20 feet off the...
Well, that, that's the other thing that I wanted to bring to the table, we provided you with the property, the plot plan, and the new language prohibits us from building it anyway, so, I mean, if there's a slap in the face, it's to us, we did...
No, I think I mentioned in the, in the meeting that you might need a variance, they may grant it, depending, depending on what you put out of fire protection.
So, it could be closer than, so it could be closer than 10 feet?
That's up to the fire department.
That's if the variance...
Okay, so...
If it's a variance, you gotta go to the zoning board of appeals for that.
Okay, so it may still be allowed to... Okay, so it may still be allowed to.
Correct.
Okay.
I mean, they make variances in everything. I mean, if you're building a building and you're within 10 feet of the property line and you advertised all the butters and you're only eight feet away from the property line and they all agree and say it's okay, you get a variance. Can be done, but you, you just can't do it. You get a permission, you get a permit.
So, we need a motion to recommend approval or not recommend approval? We need to close it first. Close it first.
Yeah. Unless, is anybody else?
Any other public comment, Mr. Karenz?
I overheard the word foundation. Are these going to be on foundations or wheels?
So, wheels, but according to the building code would have to be anchored to a sort of foundation, so I assume a four-foot sonnet tube with a boot would, would be satisfactory?
No, I don't think they're going to consider, I don't know, I'd have to talk with Caleb and I don't think they're going to consider sonnets tubes. I think they're looking at a slab.
But, but it would be a, what, a structural slab?
Yeah, but I think it has to be so thick, it's not going to be like a four-foot slab.
Right, a four-foot launch around it. Okay.
That's what I'm thinking. I don't know that. Mobile homes, so it's probably something similar to that.
Yeah, whatever the building code says for a slab.
Mobile homes. It's got to be anchored in at the corners. This might be an estimate slab and.
Which anchored in the corners.
I don't even know. I just know that's.
Because what they may allow is sonnet tubes like, say it's 20 feet long, four on each side, sonnet tubes in, you put the structural slab on top of the sonnet tubes and it's tied to the sonnet tubes. They may allow that instead of digging a four-foot foundation, which wouldn't make a lot of sense to me for a, basically a trailer.
Right.
Right? To me, that would make sense.
And that's all regulated by the building code and so.
Right, that, that was, that was the second part of our.
Yeah.
Proposal, because it would have to be updated to 2018 building code.
Right.
So, so it would be, it would have to follow all, all building code.
Regulated by.
Correct.
Absolutely. Yeah. So, anything else? Anybody else? Yes?
So, this is a topic that I'm most interested in at this meeting. I'm wondering if in trying to set up this change to the bylaws, are you hoping to allow more tiny homes in Auburn? Are you going to like approve every single tiny home that comes through? Like what is?
No, it has to be applied for.
Right, so that would be like changing it so that then people can come and bring you their requests to build tiny homes.
Which is why it's being added to the bylaws so that there is room for that, yes.
I just, you know, I can understand like the, the concerns with how information's being presented, but I just think that we have such a big issue of affordability in housing and I, um, I feel like especially with recent college graduates that are coming out with huge student loans and people that are crunched on the other end with mixed income.
That's not the purpose of the tiny home bylaws for disabled and the elderly.
Yeah.
Right, but many times people do build tiny homes because they don't want to carry mortgage anymore, so they want to have more affordable housing.
And they'd have to buy their own lot, put their tiny home on their own lot. You can't put it on another, on another structures. It's a disabled or elderly.
I guess I was just bringing that up because, you know, like I live in a, in a smaller house myself. It's right around 1,000 square feet. My plot of land is, you know, tenth of an acre, which I believe has been grandfathered in. You know, I don't think that's allowed anymore. You can't have a tenth of an acre. I live on a rural street. And I love my small yard and my small house. And I just think that, you know, there need to be more options for people that don't have this, they can't afford a $300,000 house.
It's, the intent of this currently is so that, you know, people can age in place.
Right.
And have a, you know, someone in their family assist them as, you know. And, you know, is there wiggle room and will there be changes? Who knows? But for now, this is what we're addressing with this particular one.
I just, is similar situation with like if you have a recent college graduate that wants to live on their parents' property, a similar kind of situation?
That's, I appreciate the concern, but that's exactly what we look to stop. Because the more important problem is the aging population, costs of long-term care, things of that nature. There are other problems in society, I get it, but, you know, the sweeping effects that would, if we allowed everybody to build a tiny home, would not be good.
Um, yeah. Another person's property. As an addition to an existing home, yeah, right. And so, you know, is there something down the pipe, you know, changing lot sizes and bylaws for tiny homes, period? Yeah?
Who knows?
Thank you. So, I need a motion to close if we're all set?
I'll make that motion.
I'll second it.
Okay. All those in favor?
Aye.
And then a motion to recommend?
Recommend or not recommend?
Anybody motion to recommend or not recommend?
I'll make the motion to recommend.
Second?
I'll second.
Pending.
Council.
Yeah, town councils.
Pending town councils additional minor.
Yep.
Okay. All right. Any further discussion? All those in favor?
Aye.
All right, so now we go to 7:20. 7:20, citizens petition to allow tiny homes amending Auburn zoning bylaws, section 3.2, 3.7.4, 9.3, add language requesting that adherence to the 2015 IRC mass building codes will be in all cases trumped by the 2018 IRC mass building codes for one and two family dwellings. Make reference to appendix Q.
Open the public hearing.
Motion open.
So moved?
Second.
All those in favor?
Aye.
All set? Okay, so, you want to speak to that?
Yeah, I mean, they go hand in hand essentially. The 2015 building codes don't allow for the tiny houses to be lived in, the 2018 appendix Q does. So, Auburn would have to adopt the 2018 building codes to allow for that.
Any, any discussion about that?
Yes, the, the planning board's version of the proposed bylaw we did adopt.
Appendix Q.
Appendix Q is in there for language, not the whole 2018 building code. Necessary. So, appendix Q is in there. Don't know if Massachusetts, the state's going to change that or not. It might, but that might not be for a couple of years. We don't know when the 18 building code will be adopted. To add to that, the Board of Selectmen voted on this last night, they voted not to recommend approval, the citizen petition, you know, because of the planning board's version.
So, we're doing a recommend or not recommend?
Yep, all of the same thing.
So, the selectmen voted not to recommend?
Not to recommend.
To bring the standards up to 2018?
Right. The, the, the appendix Q is already in the planning board's version, so, sort of adopting the whole 2018 building code and the planning board's version just shows the tiny home portion.
Appendix Q, portion of the 2018, okay.
I'm not really sure what a appendix Q is.
It's language addressing.
Specific to the tiny homes. So, and they haven't seen it on, it's trumped by the 2018 IRC mass building codes.
It was not recommended by the building commission because Massachusetts tends to change these things and it could be a couple of years for, for you to offer the state.
We've already got appendix Q in there, so, yeah.
Through the chair, so, to not recommend would be to adopt the entire 2018 building code?
No.
No, to not recommend.
Not recommend, tell me.
Because it's already in our building code. And tell me if I'm wrong, Adam. But I think what the selectmen are trying to avoid is, okay, we say this, we, we recommend it, and in 2020 or 2019 and a half, the state goes, well, we want this, so now you got to go to do that again.
Right.
You got to do it again, you got to do it again. That's what they're trying to avoid.
And I think instead of, at town meeting, we'll have to vote on, there'll be a vote on both the town planning board's proposal as well as the citizens petition. So, they're, the planning, the Board of Selectmen decide not to recommend the citizen petition and recommend the planning board's version. So, we're going to recommend that at town meeting.
Okay. So, we need a motion to, um, is there any public comment on this?
I, I have a question.
Okay.
If I may speak. So, I, I'm, I'm new to the process and I was wondering how it will appear to town hall voters as well to the general public if we have two proposals working side by side? How does that work? Has that been done before? I'm sure it has been, but.
Yes.
How does that go down at the town hall meeting?
They, they warrant, um, the town planning board's version comes first. If this passes, most likely a bill being motion to pass over indefinitely the citizen's petition.
Okay.
But at the end, it's a town meeting, it may not happen, we don't know. If that's the case, yours will just fall off and the planning boards will go on to the attorney general. The, um, planning boards does not pass at town meeting, that's it, it's, it's dead and then yours will be voted on and yours could pass, but it's being recommended at this point by the Board of Selectmen not to vote it today. There could be another motion to table, um, citizen's petition indefinitely at the town meeting.
Okay.
If the planning board's version fails, so.
My follow-up question is this, because I supplied lots of information, including all the definitions, the language of tiny homes, and they've been integrated into the town proposal, which is great because it still serves our interests, but I'm confused about how our original proposal has morphed into now the town's proposal and they've become two distinct operations. It, it's been a slightly, um.
I think it works kind of the way if you write a bylaw and give it to your congressman.
Oh, okay, I didn't know it would happen that soon in the process. I thought there would be discussion and.
You haven't written your congressman lately because nothing happens when you write your congressman.
I, I, I'm just asking about the process, the procedural.
I think that's the way it pretty much runs.
Yeah, just the way one of bills introduces and how everyone puts their special interest into it and what does it look like at the end.
So, if you wrote a bill, you had a bill for something, you gave it to your state legislature, it becomes their bill.
Okay.
Not your bill.
Okay, even though it's serving our interests, okay.
If it's voted in, it becomes the state's.
All the way through.
There's a lot of internal discussion as well as planning board meetings about taking your concerns, what you'd like to see and turning into a more substantial bylaw that works for the entire town rather than just you two. So, we talked to the building commissioner, we talked to fire, police, DPW, Board of Health, this board several times. Board of Selectmen has also weighed in. So, it's been really a full effort by the town to consider this.
Okay. Thank you.
Anything else?
Where are the police, fire, and DPWs at?
Their only comment was about the setback and a question of 20 feet.
I don't know if they did any additional since our last meeting, that's why I asked.
No, they, they mentioned access in case of a fire, but since it's being built the building code, the windows have to be large enough to let a fireman get inside, so we don't need any special language for that.
No, I was speaking, we're not speaking enough for an occupant to get out too.
Yeah. And there is also language in the, the planning board's version for access between the main house and the trailer, making sure it's always maintained and cleared.
So, what was their concern with the fire? That if it was too close, it would be more of a fire hazard?
Yeah.
Well, we restrict their access to get in there and fight the fire. You got 10 feet instead of 20 feet. I've never held on the end of a, end of a fire hose, but in 10 feet, it's pretty tough to do if you're blasting from heat of the wall, you're going to get, you're going to get a hand right at you.
Yeah.
That's their, I think that's.
That's the way of the main house.
Be able to fight it properly and keep it spreading to the house or neighbor's house.
Right. Would that?
That's why.
To do it in the location that say we want, would a variance be able to change that?
Yes, I, I, my personal opinion is.
Yeah. The variance.
Would.
But we're not, we're not the zoning.
No, no, I understand, I understand, I'm just concerned that.
We've been trying to figure out a legal way that.
When you go for that variance, you're going to have to provide, I think, my personal opinion doesn't mean it's the building code or the fire department code, provide a sort of, uh, fire prevention system in the home. They may allow it to go to 10 feet, I don't know. It's my only suggestion.
The standards for a variance, you have to show a certain hardship, it can't be financial. It's all right in.
How would just not even logistically possible? We don't, I, we don't have like 10 feet really in any direction except.
That's something you guys are going to have to take up with zoning.
Okay.
And, you know, we're not going to debate that here. So.
And I don't think you could use, I wouldn't, I would recommend not using a halon system because that takes the oxygen out of the air.
Yeah, right, I mean, it's.
Somebody in the house is going to die a lot of oxygen.
Yeah, sprinkler systems and I mean, it's.
Sprinkler system.
It's pretty, but even, even that, I mean.
Yeah.
Drowning.
Motion to close?
I'll make that motion and close the public hearing.
Second.
All those in favor?
Aye.
Okay. And we make, I need a motion to recommend or not recommend? The, the selectmen have not recommended it.
And the reason is because we already have it in our town.
Right. Already in the appendix Q.
So, we're already covered. I mean, we don't want to be beholden to the state, correct?
Right. That's it?
Which I don't want to be beholden to the state.
Okay, so we get on.
I'll make a motion to recommend.
To not recommend.
I mean, not recommend. Sorry.
I'll second.
Any further discussion? All those in favor?
Aye.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Next one. 7:25, Raymond and Molly Bonneville request for a special permit under section 5.3.2 of the Auburn zoning bylaws to create a hammock and lot on property located at 23 Sunrise Ave, Auburn, Mass., map 8, parcel 12.
They're still waiting on their variance at CBA, they're at CBA, at whatever their next meeting.
All right. You get a motion to continue that hearing?
I'll make a motion to continue the hearing at the next meeting.
Okay. It's April 23rd. Second?
Second.
All those in favor?
Aye.
Aye. 7:35, applicant Jonathan Poole requests a site plan approval under section 3.2.6.11 and 5.4 of the zoning bylaws. The operation of a new landscape business garage on property at 121 South Bridge Street, Auburn, Mass., map 12, parcel 143. Good evening, gentlemen.
How are you?
And how are you?
Good, thank you.
Yeah. This is great. There it is. Yep. So, it looks like everything was matched in the view. This is great. There it is. Yep. So, it looks like everything was matched in the view.
I brought some extra copies. I think I brought about eight. Take what I have.
Oh, there it is.
Oh, the plan copies?
Yeah, I knew I read it.
This was just a, kind of a colored up one that we were using in the first category. This is actually revised plan here. I don't know if anybody wants a quick overview or an update or kind of help keep the ball rolling, I guess. So, we were here, I believe, right before the turn of the year, submitted initially, we did not have a stormwater recharge system on our site. Since that meeting, we met with a town engineer, we did test pits, the Graves Engineering had come out witnessed.
And I know that was very quick, but if there's any questions, I can try to answer them.
It was just one outstanding item, number four, the construction detail for the storm tech system on sheet fours requirement for minimum of 12 inches of fresh stone.
Yep, I changed that. What we did is we, the dredge report and the couch were based on six inches of stone and I did fix that detail. You'll find it fixed now and I can point that out to you if you'd like. We were trying to minimize the footprint a little bit of the recharge system. Sometimes we use a little bit more stone, but we ended up utilizing six inches. Yep. Yes. I believe from the very first meeting, there was a comment on the, I had specked out a old kind of cover on the MDC trap. We fixed that, oh, I know, we fixed that as well. That was my bad.
Must have been a Baron.
Exactly. As I was going through my notes, so we fixed that. We just tried to call out for a, one that is around.
Anything you wanted to?
I think, oh, Dave, the period here was fine except for that one item and cracked it up. I'd ask that I get a fresh copy of those plans or those plans. So the plans that I gave last time had that. But I just, I left the four copies, additionally the ones that I had sent before, and I just made one more to have one with me tonight. So you guys should have plenty. If you need more, I can certainly come drop them off, but...
Yeah, okay. I have a question.
Sure.
I was waiting.
Sure you were. On the catch basin.
Yep.
You have your contour line at 106 and stuff like that.
Yep.
It's 105 below that, the next existing contour down, I believe the dotted ones are the existing.
Yep.
But you have a berm there, it's supposed to shoot it to the catch basin and that's impossible because it's all 106, it's gonna wanna go 105.
Can I approach just the...
Absolutely.
Your honor.
Sideburns.
It's kind of a berm. And so what happens is the water, it's gonna hit, oh, we're looking at the other way.
Right, the water's gonna run this way.
Yep. So there's a 107 contour here, so it's gonna hit and it's gonna come this way. There's a berm to catch that. Anything that drops here is already gonna go to the street.
This berm continues right across here.
Yep, so there's 106 and a, there's not any, like a half-foot contour, but the 106 and a half would be here, the 106. It gets it going to this direction here. This is kind of in a hollow, very small little bit, and so it's made to catch all that. Rather than put a trench drain in...
See, the way this is drawn on the first page, it looks like your berm comes around and it goes that way, not that way.
Yep.
But it does?
It does, yep.
Okay, so if you're putting a berm in here, I mean, is that just a crown in the pavement?
Exactly. It's just a very small berm. Again, rather than, what we're trying to avoid is putting a whole trench drain in along here, expensive, it'll kind of get gummed up and whatnot. It's really just a very small...
Less than a speed bump.
Correct. Correct. Something that certainly you could drive over, but it's just there to catch and intercept some of the water and get it to go to the basin.
keep heading out to South Chris Street?
Nope.
Wait, if you got an inch of rain, it's gonna overrun that berm? It's gotta...
No, if we got a half a foot, we gotta get in a boat too.
What the hell's that mean?
We read the analysis that...
No, no, wait a minute. What does that mean?
I apologize.
You get a foot, I mean, you gotta get a boat. No shit. Pardon my language.
No, no.
You know what? You hear before the planning board, show a little goddamn respect.
Oh, I...
Pardon my French again, but that's just bull.
I apologize. I apologize.
If you do it again, I'm gonna have her ask you to leave and then we'll deal with the other two gentlemen. I asked a simple question, I don't need a smart-ass remark.
So in the analysis, the area is fairly small. And so what happens is as the water gets going, as long as that grate remains clean, it can take in all the water, it's not gonna puddle. And therefore, it's not gonna come in a, you know, huge heavy sheet and jump over that. It's gonna hit it and it's gonna carry it. I mean, if, what we tried to avoid, again, would be a trench drain there...
Well, I can see that, because he asked to maintain.
And the flip side of that coin, what we were trying to avoid is an eight-inch berm or something that would look like a giant sweep up, if you will.
It would access the parking space.
Exactly, and so...
Now, I understand the concept, I just wanna make sure that we had a two-inch rainstorm, which is common, that it didn't overrun the berm and run out to South Chris Street like in the middle of winter. Now we got a big ice problem out here, even though it's a state road, you gotta come to the town, go, hey, what's going on? That's my, that's my concern with the drainage. Not the recharge system, that was fine, it's just the water getting to that catch basin. I'm almost wondering if you need more than one catch basin.
Again, just to kind of continue on that, the catch basin's a water quality inlet because not only it was a water quantity type of issue, it was a water quality issue with that recharge. And so it is a water quality inlet as well. So to get a bigger, a bigger structure, double grade catch basins, they start to get exponentially more expensive. We did run the couch and again, it's a relatively small area where we think the...
Is your, the catch basin's four foot in diameter.
Yep.
My only other concern is, I think I mentioned it before, is your gas oil trap outlet. I believe that's PVC pipe going into where it comes in at a slant. I don't know how you're gonna seal that so it's watertight because you can't put mortar on PVC pipe because it doesn't adhere.
What we typically call for is the inlets are cast iron. They start to run into plumbing code and plumbing code doesn't like site code. So what we typically call for is cast iron into the structure. So you can seal that up pretty good. Some plumbing inspectors wanna see cast iron out of the structure. We typically don't show that on details, we do it when we're told to and when we have to, just because of the cost of the cast iron. Pre-cast, pre-cast mini-holes, boots, and so it usually becomes watertight.
Well, this one, which you take a boot on the inlet, whether it's cast iron or PVC, if this one, I'm worried about here, even if it's cast iron, you're not gonna get a watertight connection. What you need to put there is a hydrophilic seal, like a pan of water, a hydrotite, or even fentanyl roping a small piece because it'll expand and pop the mortar on if you don't. I would suggest putting a pan of hydrotite around that. Just so you do get a watertight seal. Because you just can't get a boot on a slab.
Yeah.
Sorry, just taking...
That's all you?
Nick?
No.
Anything from the public?
Thank you.
Motion to approve?
I'll make the motion.
All those in favor?
Aye.
Motion to approve?
Make a motion to approve the applicant Jonathan Poole and request for a site plan approval.
Second?
Second.
Any further discussion? All those in favor?
Aye.
Understood.
Let me know if you need any more copies, like I said. I think I get it over the PDF, the applicant sent it anyways. Again, apologies for my...
Okay. You too. 476 Lester Street Lot 1, site plan stormwater changes and bridge structural review under discussion?
Oh, I'm sorry.
117 Washington Street Lundgren Collision Minor Modification?
Oh, okay, I got it. They asked me to speak for them. They had a National Grid out at the construction site the other day. They need a second transformer for the second building, which is required by National Grid. They don't have much of a choice in the matter. That's the only change they're asking for.
Is the transformer going on pad?
That's Lundgren, 20. It's gotta be on a pad, right?
It wasn't on a pole.
Cut it out right here.
Yeah, I'm blind.
So the only thing I would add to that, there's no bollards around it. It's gotta have bollards around it.
Okay.
I think by code.
So the only thing I'll need to approve is... To approve with minor modifications?
And can include Johnson's bollards.
It's gotta have bollards.
Okay, wanna make that motion, John?
Four inch.
I'll make the motion to approve the plan with the condition that this bollard's placed, sufficient amount of bollards placed, take a transformer.
I'll second.
Any further discussion?
Six inch bollards.
Minimum.
All those in favor?
Aye.
476 Lester Street Lot 1 and stormwater changes and bridge structural review. How are you?
Good. So the first thing that we're here for is for the modifications on Lot 1. And in the last meeting, we got the approval for the minor changes in three, four, and five, and we were waiting for the review letter from Graves Engineering to confirm that we don't need to build the tension basin in Lot 1 by only removing the panels and that would be just a minor change. We got a letter from Graves stating that, to confirm that.
Okay. I think I gave you that this afternoon, I just came in yesterday. They had no comments.
Correct.
Okay. And then the bridge structural review?
That is, the structural review is ongoing.
The structural review is ongoing, okay.
Is it also be done by Graves?
Yes. No, I'm sorry, it's not Johnson. Johnson and Blochdale.
So Pedro, can you tell us, like with the bridge, and once, if the structure is acceptable, you don't have to do any modifications, then you're just gonna put on the wood down or get some of the deck?
Yeah, the only thing that we're doing right now is the renovations on the bridge, the structural supports of the bridge as stable. I believe we submitted everything to Johnson, you know, the whole package. The only thing that we have to replace is the structural decking.
The decking?
Yeah, just the decking, I think we're gonna do that.
And it'll be wood?
I think it's gonna be either wood or pre-cast concrete. I can't remember exactly what they specify on the plans with the railings on it. But then after the bridge is in place, you know, it settles, then we'll go there and actually do the construction of the whole site.
How much can pass on the bridge, do you, the way you're designing it?
The weight, the load?
Yes.
I honestly cannot remember from the top of my head. It was all specified in the, in the plans and, you know, we had a certified bridge.
This is basically an update?
Yeah.
And you just wanna make the motion to...
Motion for the stormwater changes?
Yes.
Motion for the stormwater changes?
To accept.
To accept them.
I'll make that motion.
I'll second it.
All those in favor?
Aye.
And then the structural review is ongoing, so we won't be...
Yeah, that's what I know, the building permit is pending also, that's why.
And National Grid, you're all accepted with them?
Yeah, National Grid is all good. Yeah, we submitted the application to the DOAR, where we got this type of certification, and that's what we wanna move forward with the bridge because that's just holding all the construction.
Do they usually accept all, every solar project that comes?
If you have, if you have your approvals in hand and they don't, if everything is lined up, they don't ask any questions, if you meet all the requirements, yeah, you should be including the program. But they're, you know, these things are quite big, you have to, you know, they came back to us asking a few questions, make sure that all of our approvals are actually valid. Once you get, give information, then you're...
So someone had told me that they're currently evaluating how many there are in the area.
Yeah, because, yeah, because the issue was that they, you know, there are eight blocks and this is my program. So they got so many projects at once, they kind of didn't know what to do. It took them a long time just to settle the first set of projects. And then after they accept this first set of projects, now they're taking up to two months to accept the other project. We have projects that we submitted application two months ago, we're still waiting. So that's just...
Well, then we'll see you again.
We'll see you again. Now, do we, do we have to wait for the planning board to make a decision on the structural review in order for the building permit to move forward?
No, I don't believe so.
Okay, so they were...
It was just on there, just...
Okay, so we're...
Update the board.
Okay, so we're all signed with the Lot 1?
Yeah.
Perfect.
Should be.
All right, thank you, guys. Have a good luck. Thanks.
Reliant signs?
I, when you pack a couple of, yeah.
Have these signs already got?
I think so. Signs are working out. Good evening. I have some of the plans here. Is it plant package?
I think the...
You might have the same thing I have. Do you have the site plan? It's the same thing. You have the site plan. Yeah, whatever you sent me, I gave them. Yeah, okay.
This is new lettering though, right?
Yeah.
The sign for reliant is already out.
Yes, there's, there's, there's a few, there's...
For the endoscopic center?
There's three existing signs right now, and this, these signs are for the endoscopic sensor. So the, the first sign is the lettering that's over the entrance so that people have got into that entrance because there is the other entrance around the corner. And then the other sign is below the large sign, and that is also just to guide vehicular and pedestrian traffic to that correct entrance. The site plan shows, mentions where the existing signs are and where the proposed signs are gonna go.
Nick? No? John?
That sign that shows on the first building, it's like nine and a half feet long. But it kind of just shows you that even if that size, nine and a half feet or something like that, how they still don't look that big.
Because of the scale of the building, yeah.
Yeah, when you put the scale of the building and you're trying to show somebody where to go.
Exactly.
And those are gonna be backlit?
Yeah, the, the, the sign on the corner is backlit, just, just like the other ones, and the lettering is not eliminated.
Okay. Right. I believe, yeah, the entrance, okay.
So the big reliant is good, but then the second page, medical group's okay, but then that isn't, that, it almost ought to be twice as big so that people could see it that are going there.
Well, there's...
People that are...
There is that very large sign above it, so...
So it's people that are going there because they need some medical whatever.
Any, do you have any things to add?
No, I'll just tell you, it's a minor modification and just a few more signs. I don't really have any comments on it.
Okay. Nick? John?
No.
Mr. Briggs?
No.
Motion to minor modification of the additional signs?
I'll make that motion.
I'll second it.
Any further discussion? All those in favor?
Aye.
You're also. Thank you very much.
188 Oxford Street North, site plan amendment?
I wish you didn't do that. This is our latest version. The, one before the last one, that we had talked about the shrubs of the Catholic Church were against it. They did not wanna do it, and that's when I approached Adam that, what about a fence? So that's what we changed the, that to, and that's what I'm presenting here with the new, because now their lawyers wanna make sure that because our agreements are referring to the plan, they wanna make sure which plan, because I've got many versions of it, they wanna make sure that this is the plan.
Right, and this one will have two man gates?
Yeah, pedestrian gate.
Show us on the thing where the fence is gonna go.
It's gonna go in the access they don't want you to use. Right.
And the other one right across from the crosswalk there.
There should be a gate here at the crosswalk.
Right, and one at the other end.
My question is, if you're buying this lot of land and from the existing church out to the sidewalk, town right away is yours, correct?
Where?
Your lot basically has gotta end here, even though this is, I don't know, where the property land's gonna be here.
Correct.
But from here to here is your land.
Right.
But does St. Joe's have to say, well, whether you put plants there or not?
Well, I probably, we probably want just the whole thing to look the same.
No, I understand that.
Esthetically, yeah.
Do you have your easements yet?
Working on those, yes. Those, that's part of the...
And the parking, yeah.
Right.
So this is just all in a negotiation for, yeah, keep everybody happy. Yeah.
My only question was, I understand the traffic pattern, and then you have the traffic pattern coming down alongside the church where the little entryway is on the left there, and you have two-way traffic there, I don't know... I don't know, somebody coming this way...
The only traffic that's going to come this way is for handicap.
Is for handicap.
Handicaps.
The five spots.
No.
No, they're going to be against the building, yeah. Which they won't be here anymore, they'll be on the other side.
Rules just come on the right-hand or lefty inside of that driveway, Ronnie, and then turn left into parking space.
It's just the four handicap spots, that's it.
That line within your lot line?
Half of the parking spots, half is on my line, and half is on their parking.
And you do own, I think I asked before, you do own that empty plot, that bare plot in directly in back on the west side?
Yeah, our lot goes...
Adam, you had the picture.
It goes back this way.
This piece here.
Hopefully down the line we could develop and do, put our own parking out there if that's possible.
So you own from pavement to pavement, roughly?
Yes.
And how far back in?
It goes...
Past the trees.
Past the trees, yes.
Yeah, you could get a... So, yeah, you could get a good parking lot back there.
Yeah, you could get a few spots in there.
The only thing I could suggest, and it's just a simple suggestion, is when you come around, when you're coming in the lot this way, just have a sign here, handicap parking only.
Yeah.
Down here, you know how people...
Mm-hmm.
That's the only thing, the traffic panel looks good, in one way, out the same way.
Yeah.
That's what Bill wanted, the driveways being widened.
The only thing he wanted was that on the old one, we didn't have the measurements of the parking spots. That's what the engineer wire, and it's on here.
What you put on for them? What size are they?
Yes, it's all there.
It's all on there.
He's nine by 20, that's...
That's thick. That's healthy.
And the handicap itself, the car is nine by 20, but they have the isolated section next to it.
Right, you said each piece.
Yeah.
So we need a motion to approve a minor modification?
I'll make the motion to approve this minor modification of the plan.
I'll second.
All those in favor?
Aye.
All right, get us a vote.
Another step closer.
Thank you.
I owe you an apology, most of all, for my language. I do apologize.
Apologies. Thank you.
Laker Street, Ashworth Hill subdivision.
I'll second one.
Are you going to join us, Darlene? Are you joining us for the Booker Street, Ashworth Hill, or are you just observing?
I'm doing this. Did I come?
They're coming? Okay.
That was just kind of lost on there because kind of sorry, Austin.
Well, now that we have an open discussion.
Why didn't they come?
Yeah, why aren't they here today?
They said they had a prior commitment.
They knew when? When was the time that we scheduled that?
Two weeks ago. Two weeks ago. And did town council say anything? I mean, I'm told, I've been hearing rumblings that they put fences up the weekend after.
Bill told me that he talked to them, he watched them.
Yeah.
They had a problem with dust.
Yep.
He called the guy that works for those two, those guys, and they hadn't had the water, so he said he was going to shut them down, but then they had the water the next day.
They brought the water.
And he said, within two days when he talked, that I believe he said they had the fence up when he went back. But still, the vertical slope, and he and I talked a while today, and when you talk about the vertical slope, we had certain conditions in there, and it was like they said, oh, well, we wanted to see what you wanted. There's no want, is there some part of it that they don't understand? The conditions were a certain slope or a three to one slope or something like that.
Approved plan.
Not go and do it vertical and then hope that we'd say, oh, it's okay, because I won't.
Yeah. I still want to know about a cease and desist or a stop order on this project.
That would come from the conservation.
Well, we did, yeah, and I did have a conversation.
He said he could actually stop them and...
Excuse me.
Caleb, I'm sorry. Are we supposed to not talk on the table?
Yeah.
Here's the chair.
So, I did have a discussion with Tom Tom, Mike Garland, and one of the things he asked, and I asked Adam, is do we have the ability, the planning board, for a cease and desist? And Adam?
We don't specifically have the authority.
That authority.
DPW director can issue a work stop order.
Okay.
So, it kind of falls on Bill if that's, if he feels that that's the case.
Bill's got big shoulders, right?
Old muscle.
It was my opinion that we don't want to shut them down yet. They are complying after we ask them to do something, so it's not really the best way to, it's my opinion, not the best way to do it, but they are kicking action after.
But I think this brings up a very good point, in that we may want to start to take a look at our bylaws and make some revisions, because if we approve the plan and they're not, not to the plan.
Can we rescind the plan?
Can we, yeah. I mean, what are...
Go ahead, Wendy.
What are our options and...
I don't know if it's so lax as it is when you work past the hours designated, it's a $50 fine, how's that turned? I spent $50 in there.
So, it seems like it's something that we really need to review, get some input.
Yeah, there's been internal discussions about such thing, and I suspect that's going to be a solar project for me for Excel meeting.
And I think that's a good thing, because right now we really have no teeth.
Things happen in a project and they change, I understand that.
Right, absolutely.
People come for modifications when that happens. Even if you say, do it, and then you come back and say, sorry, fine, but if this is going to be a continuing thing, I just, I want some ability.
Yeah, we need to be able to nip it in the bud.
Yeah.
And let them know that we mean business, and that this is your approved plan, and this is what you should be doing.
There's a lot of residents over there that are impacted by this.
Absolutely.
Oh, absolutely.
They already got a lot of money into five lots.
Yeah.
So, we got to get ready.
You know why they left the face vertical, right?
Yep.
Because it's cheaper.
So, I think in the meantime, to the next meeting, so they're supposed to be here at the next meeting, we'll have some further discussions if you guys have any input, or, you know, let's talk with Adam and get our concerns well-moded.
If you're going to voice something, voice it to me, not to the board as a whole, because...
Right.
Can't do that.
Can't do that, yeah.
That was a corner.
Right.
All right. Okay. One other thing that I'd like to, I'd like to mention is the Briar Cliff and Amherst Drive. I got an email from a new property owner with video showing that the, his property backs up to Briar Cliff up here, and then Amherst is down here, and he planted a couple dozen abreviatee and put in a fence in an effort to stabilize the slope, and I don't know if you saw the video, if you guys happened to see that, but the water has just gushed, gushes down. It has already compromised all of the abrevieties that he planted, the fences, you know, ready to go, and it's just pouring down onto his property.
Off of someone else's?
Off of Briar, yeah, it's coming right down off of Briar Cliff, down onto Amherst, and bad.
Can you show that section?
Do you have that video?
Yeah, let's see that, and we're actually going out there tomorrow afternoon.
Okay.
So, my first question would be, did they go according to the approved plans? I doubt it.
Well, and here we are again, you know, or still, we should say still, because this has been an ongoing.
That's...
The first...
And this guy's a new home, he just moved into town, bought this house, had no idea what was going on.
The first developer had the same problem up there.
Right. And he did try to, I guess, mitigate it with Gallo, and there was no, nothing successful there.
Can you, on the, can you show us on the plan which house is washing out?
I believe it was coming down approximately here, down here.
So, yeah, from 23 Briar Cliff, the backyard of number 23, who Mr. O'Brien has been here before.
So, it's 23.
So, it's washing from which direction?
Top, down?
Down.
Yeah, but it's Briar, it's the top.
Into this guy's, where's Amherst? Yeah, that's, that's not 23, it's... So, there's a couple of new houses down here.
It's probably back there.
And this, this isn't, this doesn't show the most reason. That's not the most recent, right?
There's Regis, and then Briar Cliff coming up, but I think that might be Amherst right there.
Amherst is right here.
Okay.
And there are three or four houses here now.
Okay.
And so, this house behind, I want to say it's one, two, third one up, where there's been a lot of problems with water. So there's a pretty steep slope.
It's pretty steep.
Yeah, and then drop off. And like I said, in the back here, this guy here planted, you know, a couple dozen abreviatee, put up a fence, a chain of fast...
The guy at Amherst?
Did, yes. To try to, you know, anchor that and...
The only way to anchor that properly is riprap.
Well, they have riprap on, you know, some of the other driveways on the side, but, so the water is just coming down like a river.
There's a couple of houses up there.
If you have a steep slope...
They got a...
Yeah.
If you have a steep slope and a sudden drop to the next yard, if this face here, and part of, onto the slope, isn't riprap, and I mean riprap with stuff half the size of this table, it's never going to hold.
Yeah.
It's always going to wash out. They had the same problem with the first developer.
Yeah, so that's what's, yeah, the video was pretty disturbing.
Well, that depends on...
You can kind of see where it's, you know, right there.
And you can't direct water onto the property of another.
Yeah.
It's off someone else's thing.
Well, you can't direct...
Maybe coming from them onto the street.
Water can be directed to your neighbor's yard as long as it isn't more water than the original water. Because you built the house, you're not responsible for the slope of the land if you didn't change it.
And you guys are going to take a look at that tomorrow?
Tomorrow.
Yeah.
Have they got all the manholes degraded?
They found them underneath the tack.
I don't know.
Well, it's an ongoing, ongoing problem.
Do you know that? Have they got all the manholes raised, the grave, and the catch basins?
I know Bill has been in contact with the developer.
He said they were doing it, but...
I don't know.
Okay.
Yeah, it's kind of a discussion.
Don't you guys want?
He picks up the phone when there's something that needs to be done.
Oh, I'm sure he tells.
All right, so we'll wait to hear from you at the meeting on that. Can we put that on the discussion?
Yeah.
All right, minutes? Do you have something else?
Oh, yeah, one more thing, they can do minutes for us.
Make a motion to approve the minutes from the previous meeting.
I'll second it.
Any further discussion? All those in favor?
Aye.
What do you got?
I got a letter from the registry of deeds, teenager's images.
Oh, okay.
So, pretty...
For what she's for?
So they know on the plans.
The plans, they know we signed them?
Oh, they want a copy of our signature.
Yeah, for you.
Okay.
Yes.
So you have to sign here and then again here?
No, we do.
Adam, do you have a signature?
No.
I didn't see him.
No, he doesn't get to sign.
All right, you can just do that.
I'll elevate you up again, and then you can start again. Take you to turn up the volume.
You'll fill in the dates, right?
Yeah, I can be right.
That'd be great.
That's all.
Okay. Any other updates or anything? No?
Um, no, not, not really. We had the MVP listing session last night, so that grant project is pretty much done. I just got to submit the final report. You, a more box checked out, that was done. Master Plan Committee is chugging along, and the zoning bylaw review committee is going to be handling the zoning diagnostic grant we received. The work seemed out, proceed to kind of go through some of the, all the zoning bylaw and compare them to our goals in the economic development plan, the housing plan, and the master plan, try to funnel the bylaw changes to see what's holding up the goals, and try to come up with a game plan by the end of this year.
Okay.
What needs to be changed in the zoning.
Excellent.
So, that's about it.
All right. Next meeting, April 23rd. Did you, all right, motion to adjourn?
I'll make motion to adjourn.
Second.
In favor?
Aye.
Aye.